Good evening. Welcome to the continuation of the Tuesday, January 27, 2015 Elmhurst Board of Education meeting. The board, we have, I may add, we have six members present, one absent at York with an entering freshman. We have been in closed session since 6:00 this evening talking about contract negotiations, employment of employee, and the approval of the December 16, 2014, the January 13, 2015 closed session minutes. Please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have any blue public comment cards up here. Anybody want to make a comment? Come on, man. All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Superintendent's Communication, Mr. Prunow.
Yes, let me start this evening with Freedom of Information Act request. Since our last meeting, we have had three requests. One requesting copies of all copier and print leases, which was granted. One requesting union officials' compensation, which was granted, and one requesting invoices for legal services, which was granted. Those are the three FOIA requests that we have received. Next item is PMA projections. Just as a refresher for the public, at our last board meeting, we presented the board with tentative staffing requests for a maintenance staffing configuration for the 15-16 school year. The Board of Education approved that request. That has been now put into our PMA projections. And this evening, we would like to update the board on those PMA projections based on the staffing, the tentative staffing that the board approved at our last meeting. After that, at our next board meeting, we will be coming back to the board and have a discussion about whether or not there's a possibility of discretionary spending in this year's budget going into the 15-16 school year. So with that, turn over to Chris.
We have Gary Lundquist here representing PMA to present the projections.
Right, we have a few changes since we were last here in December. Significantly, on the revenue side, for levy year 2015, the CPI, which was just recently announced, is 0.8 percent. When I was here in December, we were using 1.6 percent for the assumption for the 2015 levy year. Now, going forward, for the levy years 16 through 20, we've made a change here. We're going down a bit, 1.5 percent versus 1.8 percent in December. And you can see how this fills out on this table here. If you were to look at 2015, it's down to 0.8. That had been at 1.6. So those lines were, in December, were pretty well flat going across. But now, the 0.8 is down from 1.6, and the 1.5s are down from 1.8. That'll have effect on the revenue side. Expenditure assumptions. Planning on 6.5 versus 10.07 FTEs. And budgeting new hires, it looks like MA Step 3. Gives you some latitude, depending on the candidates that come to you. Adding no certified staff versus two, that were discussed in December. And the impact for fiscal year 16 looks like about 314,000 savings. Expenditure assumptions are now tied to CPI. Again, 2015, 0.8 percent, and 16 through 20, 1.5 percent. So moving ahead on the graph, the numbers of staff for, you go back to the actual, 649.7, which was no change from December. But moving forward, that reduction in the number of FTEs fills itself in. For example, in 2016, you have 656.2. When we were here in December, it was 659.8. That plays out so that in 2020, we now have 687.1 versus 690.8 FTE. And the details of those FTEs are shown below. I won't read that to you. So now, we start to see what this happens in the operating funds, which, again, never hurts to remind everybody, that's education, O&amp;M, transportation, IMRF, Social Security, and working cash. So these are the amounts that are shown based on the new assumptions. And you'll see you have, for example, in 2016, operating deficit of about 796,000. In December, that was 738. We have some transfers among funds, as we did before. Going out to 2020, we see we have a projected operating deficit of 1.134 million. That, these, this table is shown on a graph, and you can see that the slope is downward, but that slope is pretty shallow. We're not talking about any significant changes. They are changes, such that at 2020, you're going to, projected to be 32.312 cumulative in your operating funds, whereas in December, it was about 33.18, if I recall. The difference is about 870,000. But again, the numbers are lower, but the slope of that line remains very, very gently sloping downward. There are no large disruptions as a result of the conversations that you all have had here recently. And again, if we take and we add the projections for all funds, which includes your debt service, those numbers and the projected end-year balances, which is down at the bottom of the page, just above the double line, we see another line that slopes even more gently downward, so that in 2020, the cumulative balance in all funds is shown at 37.533, whereas in December, it was 38.403. And those are the changes that have been made. Everything else that we discussed is pretty much the same. So your revenues are down, but you're going to take your expenditures down, and you're going to tie salaries back to CPI. And there's not a significant change to the balances on the back end. That line, just look at the slope of the line. It's very gentle. It can be sustained for some considerable period of time. Thank you.
Any questions? Comments? Karen?
Yeah, so bottom line, I'm seeing three things, right? We adjusted because of CPI. We adjusted because of the staffing that we talked about at the last meeting. And then lastly, with the mobile learning initiative, it is just current, like where we have, it's kind of a maintenance plan in these projections, right?
We haven't, we haven't put in any assumptions related to implementing the mobile learning initiatives, other than our regular technology plan.
So this projection is projecting it with where we are today.
Right.
With mobile learning initiative. Just wanted to clarify.
The other thing that I wanted to make sure we pointed out, that we didn't make any assumptions because we don't know what the legislature is going to do related to Senate Bill 1, which is formerly known as Senate Bill 16, or the pension cost shift. There's nothing in the assumptions. These assumptions are that everything will remain the same. But they are concerns as we move forward, that that could impact these projections in a negative way if the pension was shifted or if Senate Bill 1 was implemented.
In the districts I've talked to, there is this awareness of those two particular issues, but since these are so entirely speculative at this point, it seems that you wouldn't really want to put it into your projections, since we don't know what those amounts will be, nor do we even have any legislation to tie that back to.
I have a few notes from Chris Bloom, if I can point them out. As I said, he's at York with his daughter at the moment. But he just wanted to remind all of us that this is still a preliminary budget. The point in the budgeting cycle we're at right now is this is intended to help us with staffing decisions. To answer the question, do we need to cut? Do we have more money for discretionary spend? So, you know, we've seen where we're at. And it's been brought up many times, that it assumes that expenses continue to be tied to CPI, which is the primary driver of our revenue. I mean, I'll add to that, that it's been nine years since we've had a referendum. For nine years, we have not asked the community to raise their property tax bills any greater than the rate of inflation, which has averaged something like 1.8 percent over those nine years. I think we've been doing a good job keeping our revenues and our expenses in line and in order. And over that period of time, we've, because the economy has been good and new growth in new building in Elmhurst has been robust the last few years, we've built a little bit of a surplus. So in our projections, we show that negatively sloped line, that we're planning on spending down that surplus over the next five years. We've added technology coaches. We've added teachers. And we have a budget that will sustain those people. And, you know, given any unforeseen circumstances, like the ones we talked about, these legislative initiatives that would dump more of the state's current costs on local school districts, we can continue to invest in those resources for our kids. So the annual projected deficits are about, are less than 2 percent of our revenue, which, you know, we would consider essentially a balanced budget. And is a spend-down that avoids impacting the classroom. Now, Chris's comment here is, he says he would advocate staying the course and not cutting, but also not adding any more discretionary items at this time. That's his opinion. If the projected trend in deficits does in fact continue, in other words, if we don't come in with higher revenues or lower expenses than we project, over the next couple of years, we'll have to revisit this downward sloping line. We don't want to let finances get to the point where we go negative at our lowest cash flow point of the year, which is at the end of May. Also recommend going back to the Policy Committee and changing our fund balance target to a minimum of 28 percent. We've seen it at 26. We run into trouble at 26 percent, which is our current guideline, but would recommend taking it back to policy and changing that to 28 percent, based upon the model that we've run here. So those were, end of Chris's comments with my editorial additions. Emily?
Well, in your, nodding your head, so you agree with the 28 percent versus 26 percent? Okay.
We thought at one point it could go as low as 25, but empirically, we've discovered that 28 is the number. Go ahead, John.
Are we ready to just add that as policy matter? Or is there more preparation that needs to be, more study that needs to be going? Or is that something we should just, I mean, we just had a Policy Committee meeting, so we're not going to have one for a few months, but maybe we should add that, plan on adding that.
That would be the only change in that policy needed, would be to change that 26 to a 28. And that would prevent us from having to borrow with a 28 percent.
And you mean the borrowing would be the short-term borrowing?
Short-term.
The tax anticipation warrants, which...
Which, in May, to get us through to the next June collection.
And that really should only be like an emergency situation? Like, school districts have to do that or not, in good shape, or not? Elmhurst should never have to do that.
I'll add to that, that essentially, it's a cancer. You are borrowing from next year's budget to pay for this year's budget, which makes your problem next year doubly worse. If you go several years, triple, quadruple worse. And then you're at a point where you have to raise class sizes and slash personnel just to make up. Or go back to the taxpayer for a tax increase, but because you've been irresponsible with their money. And I, that's a situation I never want to see from the school board. Margaret?
Question, have we ever done that?
Issue tax anticipation warrants? Yes, yes. Prior to the 2006 referendum, I believe, was it '04 or '05, or maybe both years, they issued tax anticipation warrants, yes.
Thank you.
Or, I'm sorry, Shannon?
I wanted to point out, about seven years ago, I, Chris, you probably know the year, when our, when the CPI was 0.1 percent increase, that caused a lot of problem for the district and contributed to a budget-cutting scenario. And here we have 0.8, which we anticipated a little bit higher, but very low, and we're not in that position now with a 0.8 percent. Not in the same position that we were in with the 0.1 percent. I know the 0.1 percent's a little bit lower, but that really caused a lot of problems financially for our district. So based on what we've been doing for the past few years with tying our revenues and expenditures to CPI, we're able to overcome a lower CPI than anticipated. So I'm happy, happy about that situation.
Similar to, on that topic, I heard today that these three years of CPI, less than 2 percent, the three consecutive years is the lowest that has been in three years like that since the '60s, that these are just really the lowest inflation over a period of time like that since the '60s. And that will have, since our revenues are completely tied, or not completely, 85 percent tied to that, that is, it does make it tough to keep your expenditures aligned with your revenues.
John?
But have our expenditures been also tracking CPI? I mean, we're using CPI in the projections that assumes that they have been tracking along CPI, and really should have been, you know, occurred on both sides when the CPI drops like that.
The concern on the expenditure side with CPI are things like health insurance tends to increase more, it's trending at 8 or 9 percent, and right now, our PPO is projected at about 14 percent. Some of the outplace tuition is always a concern, that that, we tend to project that at 10 percent, double digits, because that, the other concerns, sometimes the electricity and natural gas will outpace inflation. I'm just trying to think of things that are beyond our control sometimes in trying to keep our expenditures aligned with inflation. Those are some of the costs that I think about that outpace inflation, or the tuition, the insurance, the utilities.
And there's nothing similar on the other side?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good luck to you all. Next item. We have been planning for what is called Aaron's Law. This is a new legislative requirement of school districts. And the requirement is to expose students in the educational setting to be aware of inappropriate touching of children from adults and sexual predators. And it's a requirement that requires us to teach some version of the law across the district to all students. So Michelle has been working with her staff to put together a program for Elmhurst students. And as a matter of fact, there was a parent informational meeting last night for elementary and middle school parents about what we're going to present to students in the elementary and middle school. And Michelle can talk about that, what that looks like. And I passed around a book that will be used for our kindergarten curriculum that we're asking tonight to be put on display. With that, I'm going to turn over to Michelle.
Okay, so the book you have is for kindergarten. Yes, My Body Is Special. And it will be in conjunction with social workers and classroom teachers reading the book to the kids. The bilingual, it's not in Spanish, we had it translated, so the bilingual students will be having the exact same book, exact same message. We understand that it's not just the 15-minute book talk, it's going to be the work that social workers will need to do afterwards if kids have questions. Certainly, our social workers will be available to kids to have that conversation with them. In first through eighth grade, they're going to get a presentation by a company called Imagination Theater. Been in business for 48 years. They go around, and it's people up there presenting scenes, scenarios. And we had a group, Connie has been leading a lot of this work. Connie, Dave Beatty, Tammy Poole went and saw them first at another school. We met with them and had, was able, we were able to really make it our own presentation. So first through fifth grade, we'll see the same presentation. And then sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we'll see a little more middle school presentation. It's very interactive. Kids will be called up to role-play along with, and then they stop the presentation throughout, and they start, and they ask kids questions. What did you see up there? What were you thinking? What questions do you have? Last night, as Mr. Prunow said, we ran the exact presentations that the kids will see and invited all parents. We had about 20 parents for the middle school presentation and approximately 60 for the elementary presentation. We did have Spanish interpreter available, didn't need to use it last night, but we had somebody there in case any of our Spanish-speaking parents came. The feedback I've received from Connie and Ellen was there was that parents were very pleased, very appreciative that the district gave this opportunity for them to see it. There is, of course, an opt-out. Parents can opt their child out of this presentation. They've been given the letter. Malia posted it for us. The letter was there last night. I believe one parent took a couple copies of the opt-out letter. Opt-out letters will go to principals, and principals will organize an alternative environment for the students for that day, or for that 45-minute presentation. So that's what we're doing for Aaron's Law. The high school has their own. Chris Covino's been working, and they're doing an assembly as well. Question?
And when is this scheduled?
It's in February for the, the presentations are in February. The book will go on display for 30 days, so the kindergarten kids, the books won't be available until March.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate your taking a requirement, statutory requirement, and doing a really good job with it for the community. Appreciate that. But this is definitely an imposed one-off obligation imposed by the state legislature.
Yes.
Okay, was there any data that supported why they one-offed this and not, say, other things like, say, drug abuse, or?
Erin Maron is the, it's the Aaron's Law that's who it's named after, is a woman in her 20s who's going around two states and asking states to pull this, push this legislation through, that it's a K-12 sexual abuse awareness, that she had, you know, experienced it herself, and says why she feels that kids need to have this information so that they know, you know, it's about knowing what's an appropriate touch. And then, most importantly, who can I go talk to should I feel uncomfortable?
I looked at the materials, and I think they're very instructive. You wonder, how are they going to take this very complex?
Yes.
Situational evaluative, you know, challenge and present it to kids who might not have. And I got to tell you, the material is pretty impressive on how they do it. And thanks for doing such a good job on the program.
Thank you.
Just a question of clarification. So this is not part of the health curriculum? It's just something that we have to provide every year for all students, all grades? Okay, thank you.
Just to emphasize too, as Michelle said with this book, but also when we do the presentations, we will have psychologists and social workers on standby. And that's an important piece, because you will have students with questions or will want more information. It's important to have that counseling piece that comes forward. So that's a big part of this. And you, in my experience, you don't have a lot, but you do have a few students that have further questions.
I'm sorry if you mentioned this already. Do they do the boys and girls together?
Yes.
Okay.
And just that, the approval of the 30-day display is in the consent agenda this evening.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the approval of board meeting minutes from December 16, 2014, and January 13, 2015. Are there any changes to those minutes? Karen?
I actually have two changes, actually one a question, Ellen, but I think it's a minor change that'll be required. It's January 13, 2015, meeting minutes. The first one is on page one, and I moved, or placed a motion, and then Emily Bastido seconded, although a roll call doesn't place Emily second in that roll call. So it was to start the meeting. Minor, but, you know, to be consistent and accurate. The second one is on page four, when we talk about board communications. The Elmhurst District 205 PTA Council is hosting the legislative forum, and I know that they are inviting the League of Women Voters and Lend to participate, but it really is the PTA Council Legislative Forum, and I'm going to make sure that it's noted that way. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we'll let those minutes stand as amended. Next on our agenda is board committee reports, the Learning and Teaching Committee. Shannon?
Margaret was the note-taker, so she's going to give the update. Thank you.
All right, so we had our Learning and Teaching Committee meeting on January 7. And there were, there were no public comments. It started at approximately 7:03. Key issues covered, the first piece was the summer school was discussed, and the timing of the summer school, it will run from June 8 to July 16. Bill Riddle is going to be the supervisor. There's going to be two sessions within that timeframe, June 8 through June 25, and June 29 through 7/16. As usual, the summer school goes from Monday through Thursday. There are no classes on Friday. There will also be no makeup classes for the 4th of July, because the 4th of July falls during the weekend for summer school. The majority of the meeting was an ELL update that was given by Arianna Leonard, and the, I will not give this presentation justice. We have asked that Arianna come to the board meeting and present that whole presentation to the board so everyone can see it, but I just wanted to cover a couple quick things that were covered. General, so you'll have anticipation on what to look forward to. There, the presentation included, you know, some myths versus realities about the English language learner community, the current English language learner population in Elmhurst, the type of grants. of grants that were available, there was a recognition of teachers and staff, it talked about the bilingual parent advisory committee or B-PAC meetings. It also gave some information about changes to the district KPI, which were, which will be, ELL is affected by. And it also brought up this topic, the seal of biliteracy. And you'll, we'll be talking a little bit more about that, but it sounds like a wonderful opportunity for our students to participate in. Within those key areas, there was a couple of questions that came up that I thought were worth mentioning. The first part that was interesting was that Arianna mentioned the diversity of the languages, languages that are spoken within our district, and it was noted that there were 55 languages that are spoken within our community. Most common languages, perhaps, of no surprise, Spanish, Polish, two languages from India, the area India, and also Philippine, Filipino, Tagalog. It was also noted in here, not just the diversity of languages, but the diversity in their socioeconomic status. There's, there are students who came from, who were very well-educated, and when they transferred over, and then there were students who did not have a lot of formal education. So there was a lot of social and economic diversity in our ELL population, just to make sure we're aware of that, that there is, there's not a standard grouping. There was a mention of the collaboration that's gone on within the English language learners and how they have worked with the teachers, the staff, the parents. And there was also discussion about some of the groups that were mentioned, which they, of course, mentioned the, by B-PAC, the bilingual parent advisory council, but they mentioned the dual-language study team, the EC-12 team, and of course, the English language learner team. And all of those groups working together to make sure that population receives all the, all the, all the things that were necessary. Discussion also included various evaluation procedures for the ELL program. There's a conversation about the ELL audit update, which occurred last year, and all conditions for the audit have been met. There was a recommendation that the focus be on student growth as a key performer for the ELL population, and again, that seal of biliteracy was mentioned. That was the summary of the ELL update.
Thank you. I just wanted, the PowerPoint came in, and I was trying to find it because I want to make sure, point it out to all the board members, there's a lot of information, a lot of really good information. I'm glad she sent the PowerPoint, I appreciate that. I'm trying to find the email so I can forward it on to the rest of the group.
It's in Board Docs.
Because I just looked at Board Docs and it wasn't, I didn't see it on the agenda.
Under Administrator Contact.
Ah, that's it, okay. It, I mean, is there any reason why we couldn't make that public? Because I think there's a lot of information for the community that, you know, there was a lot of eye-openers. It was a great presentation, so.
Well, yeah.
Great.
And the one thing, and I, let's, we want to make it public, absolutely, but I think it'll also benefit, because we talked about bringing it to the whole board and to the committee, so having that date to do that. And then we'll have it, it'll be in the public documents at that time.
Right, thank you.
Last, it was a brief update about the support classes offered for the eighth-grade math students, and there's been some logistical, there was a face-to-face, right now, there's a face-to-face support class offered at the middle school level, and that's being very well-attended. There's also a virtual support class that has been, at this point, not good attended at all. It's been running for five weeks. I think for three weeks, there was one person, not the same student, in attendance, and the last, in the two weeks, there were no people. So there was a recommendation that the virtual class be discontinued, and those would be, was going to be sent out to parents to let them know that that virtual class would be discontinued. The next Learning and Teaching Committee meeting, there's a change here, the next one is Monday, February 2nd, at 7:00 PM. And then the meeting was adjourned at 8:15. Does anyone have any questions?
So, so with respect to the ELL, it sounds as though we went from 20-some languages to 55 in a short period of time, just a few number of years. And are we seeing, what's the best way of saying it, where we're seeing more languages come into the district, or as well as across the district, right?
I don't know what the data is for years before. So I can't necessarily say if we've had a big jump. I mean, if you're saying that we were at 20, then yes, we're seeing a-
Almost 30, but.
Right, right, and 36 is usually what I've seen in other districts, about 36. So it is a high number for, for a district to have 55 different languages. But I did, I just don't, I can't really answer that about where it's coming from.
I just wanted to acknowledge the administration because I remember, it wasn't that long ago that we got the results of the audit, and it says as of August 2014, those have all been met. So that's really, that was really quick, and that was a good job, so thank you.
Anything else? Shall we move on to Finance and Operations? Karen?
So I'm going to give the update on the Finance and Operations Committee meeting on behalf of our co-chair, Chris Bloom. So the first item was the school bus consultants. And just to give you an idea is the, we're looking at this because our current school bus contract is expiring, and Chris Welton, on our behalf, is working with a school bus consulting firm to develop an RFP for the new contract, and is also asking the firm to investigate options to increase the efficiency of the transportation. Over the number of years, as we all know, that the transportation costs, needs are vast, as well as the money coming from the state has been decreasing, so more districts are looking at what are the options, and really looking at it from very creative solutions, and that's why that initiative is moving forward. The RFP is the, is the current focus, and will come to the board when it's completed. We just started that process, Chris did. What we're, the efficiency opportunities will be brought to the board when and if they're identified, when we get past this RFP process, okay? But that's what we anticipate. Secondly, the facility rentals. We just wanted to highlight with the board that the fees increased 1.5%, which has been consistent over the years of CPI, so just to note that. And then, we plan to provide an opportunity for our York users to get into one room together and work out scheduling collectively so that we can avoid the online lottery process, so that hopefully we'll take some of the burden off of the York and the central office administration while accommodating our customers. So that's something that we're going to try new this year. With respect to the December monthly financial report, we're really on plan, you know, through December, so there wasn't really anything new, new there. And then Frank Schu developed an overview document, document in response to a question that was raised by one of the board members, related to different methods of project contracting. So that document is posted on Board Docs, and you can review it at your leisure. So those are really the highlights. The only other item that I would also add is, we talked about the PMA projections, but we've got the presentation already. But the budget at a glance, Malia and Chris and their staffs have updated the budget at a glance, and there's a lot more, even more useful information in it this year than previous years, so I wanted to thank them for that. I know that I missed the last Finance and Operations Committee meeting when they brought it the first go-around, but in looking at it and reviewing the minor changes, it was very helpful, and it'll help us even more effectively budget and, and make financial decisions. So, thank you. Any questions?
Number one, I wanted to comment that 9:50 PM is entirely too late for committee meeting to end. And is it true that the next meeting's changed to February 25th? Is that right still? Yes. So, okay.
Anything else? Shannon?
The Budget at a Glance, it's a, it's a great document, and I'm wondering, how do we, maybe in the past, how have we gotten that information out to the schools? Have we gotten copies to the PTAs, or is, maybe you can let me know if that's been done before, or how we could do that?
Well, in general, we post it online, and then we send notification through one of our Talk25 messages about that. And we are planning to print 100 copies or whatever for the PTA Legislative Forum, so that will be available. And we have some copies here in the office, so if anybody's interested in stopping by and picking up a hard copy, they can do that also.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, let's move on. Next is our Superintendent's Consent Agenda. There are four items, item A through D, and I would need a motion. Go ahead.
I move that we approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda item, Consent Agenda Items A, B, C, and D.
I second the motion.
Moved by Shannon, seconded by Karen. Mrs. Walsh, do we need a roll-call vote for this? Okay, please.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom is absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes. That's six ayes, no nays, one absent. That motion passes. The next on our agenda is two, two different donations. We separate them out because we want to make a point to thank the organizations that donate to our school district. Anybody want to take the first one and describe it and make a motion? Thank you.
Oh, sure. Description is, the Hawthorne School PTA is generously offering to donate 25 full-size laptops and two shelving and storage units for that. The donation will not exceed $22,000, or $22,500. We thank the parents and the Hawthorne School PTA very much for helping us, and our students and teachers. So the recommendation, I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from the Hawthorne School PTA for 25 laptops and two shelving units in an amount not to exceed $22,500. In addition, the PTA acknowledges the district is not committed to the repair or replacement beyond the useful life of the technology. The, this donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 8:80, gifts to the district.
Do I hear a second? Emily?
I second.
Thank you.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom is absent. Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. That's six ayes, no nays, one absent. That motion passes. And our second donation of the evening, please.
So, once again, a PTA donation. So thank you to the Edison School PTA and parents and community. They've generously offered to donate $959.60 to purchase 40 Lacrosse technology, 14-inch atomic wall clocks. I think this has been a hot topic for a number of years, so good for them that they finally made this happen. And so the, I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from the Edison School PTA for those 40 atomic wall clocks in an amount of $959.60. This donation is accepted in accordance with the Policy 8:80, gifts to the district.
And do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay. Moved by Karen, seconded by Margaret.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom is absent. Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent. I realize that takes a little bit more time than putting them all on the consent agenda, but I think it's time we have to say thank you to all the generous people in our community and the PTAs that donate to our schools. So, thank you again. Next on the agenda is upcoming meetings. Oh, I'm sorry, Board Communications, thank, thank you, Mr. Prunow, I'm getting ahead of myself here. Anything under Board Communications? Go ahead, Karen.
I know that the last board meeting, we had talked about the PTA, our District 205 PTA Council hosting this legislative forum, but it is firmed up, and it is definitely Monday evening, February 23rd, at 7:00 PM. The title is "The Cost of Free Public Education Under the New Reality." We have two of our senators and two of our House representatives participating, as well as our local, Jan Dornar from the League of Women Voters of Elmhurst, and our Lend Executive Director, Peg Agnos. The way that the PTA Council has worked so collaboratively in this unified, really collaborative effort from a lot of different organizations coming together, I really wanted to commend them. It's, it's shaping up to be a really good community forum, talking about education and, and legislation, and how we can work together to help out the community and our students. So I thank the PTA Council immensely.
John, Shannon, can we get a quick stormwater update?
Just wanted to let you know where this stands. We did, as a matter of, to expedite this, agreed to go on a parallel path to negotiate intergovernmental agreement terms at the same time that we were undergoing a concept and plan review. In both cases, we had requested that the city agree to pay the professional fees involved with both of those reviews, an engineer in the plan and, or the concept and plan review, design review process, and to help, or to pay the fees of the attorney who would help us with our review of the intergovernmental agreement and its terms. We've been, as laypeople, through the plans and concept, and we've done what we can in terms of giving our comments. We're ready for professional review, and the same thing on the agreement side, in that we've met, we've discussed what we think should be in the agreement, we put in the agreement, and we now need an attorney to review it before we can send it back to the other side. And I know there have been some communications or messages going back and forth, but we do need that letter to move on to the next step.
And just to update you, the letter, I was directed by the Board of Education, read a letter to the city asking for reimbursement for expenses related to the review of the project and legal fees. Jim Grabowski received the letter, he has had a couple of questions about possible limitations, and we just have not connected. We've been playing phone tag together. So as soon as Jim and I get together on our schedules, I can report back to the board what that discussion is like.
Great, thanks. The only thing I can add to the conversation is, is after the, the board meeting where Alderman Kennedy was here, he and I spoke afterwards, and he said, "The city is at the point where they would like the school board to lay out some specifications for the Madison School site that, that they can have their engineering firm engineer to." Problem is, I don't think we know where to start, and we would need some professional engineering advice to, to guide us on those specifications. So, again, we're, we'll wait for this, for Mr. Prunow to talk to Mr. Grabowski, figure out what the mechanism is to get that paid for, and then hire an engineering firm that can help us through those, through those engineering specs. So, Shannon?
And there's also some efficiencies we can capitalize on with the park- And there's also some efficiencies we can capitalize on with the Park District, is they've done a lot of engineering work that overlaps with the Madison property. There, some of the engineering work they've done affects what we would do, because it's so close to York Commons, and it's so close to Washington Street, and some of, some of the solutions they're working on affects the Madison project. So we need to continue to work closely with the Park District, too. So you're not paying for, you know, the city's engineer, and then the Park District has an engineer, and then our engineer could look at the same thing that has already been studied by the Park District. So we need to keep this in mind to be efficient.
Actually, when we get to that point, we should have the discussion about just hiring the Park District's engineering firm. And it seems like we could gain the taxpayer some economies of scale if we were to entertain that.
I mean, it is professional services, and it's highly dependent on the identity of the individual. How would you approach engineering firms? I mean, I guess, I guess the first stop would be to interview the Park Districts, because that firm already knows the program, knows how the pieces fit together, knows the development plan, and, you know, they got a big head start in anyone else.
Right. I mean, I just, I'm just throwing that out there, that would seem to be some common sense, just to talk to them at least first. So. Anything else on that topic? Anything else on, under Board Communications? Then let me quickly preview the upcoming meetings, all of which will be held in the rooms we're in this evening at 162 York. Thursday, January 29th, Special Board of Education meeting at 6:30 p.m. We'll be interviewing search firms for, to identify superintendent candidates for us. Monday, February 2nd, as we noted, is the Learning and Teaching Committee at 7:00 p.m. Thursday, February 5th, is the second round of superintendent search firms. We'll have three firms coming in that evening. Tuesday, February 10th, is our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Thursday, February 19th, at 7 o'clock, is the Performance Management Committee meeting. And Tuesday, February 24th, is, again, our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting after the Board of Education meeting that occurs on February 10th. And then Thursday, February 25th, is the Finance and Operations Committee meeting at 6:30 p.m. We're at the point on our agenda where there is nothing left. So why don't I declare this meeting adjourned?